I would call this meeting to order. I noticed that Betty and Sandy are both here, but we still have a forum.
But neither one is here.
Neither. You know what I said?
That's what you get at a 7:00 AM.
Just for the, so you know Betty is in the Youth in Action, whatever it's called.
Young Neighbors in Action.
Young Neighbors in Action in Indiana with a church group. Sandy Robinson called in rather ill this morning, so that's why they're not here. I will make note of the attendance.
Is there a motion as far as the agenda? So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Looks like everybody is under contract here, so we will go past public comment. Turn approval of the minutes. Motion?
So move for approval.
Second, anyone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Communications, Dave?
We have donation from John and Deb Skirms donated forty inch, forty-eight inch drop-in sink countertop for the home being built by the CTE program valued at $480. Would ask for a board motion to accept that.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So Dave, just for a second, does that happen that there's a need for that and the word just gets out and it gets donated?
Well, Ms. Irvin got that donation, so I'll ask her to address it.
They just called me and asked me if we would like it.
Oh, okay.
So we didn't spread any word out. They just knew they were building a house and asked it.
Okay.
At this point, we're hoping that it fits. We don't know for sure that it's going to, but we'll make good use of it one way or the other.
I was just gonna mention John Skirms, I know is a member of Rotary and there was a presentation once not too long ago about the house and whatnot, and he may have thought and heard of it.
Okay.
Possibly, because we had had a number of donations in the past of various appliance.
Next item is not a donation, but a thank you note for Mission of Hope. Mission of Hope was event held at the Learning Center in the spring. Ms. Hare is a part of that group, and if you saw in the packet, there is a very nice assortment of services and products and goods that were donated at that time and very well attended at the Learning Center as well as a very nice event. Rhonda, they're gonna do it again?
Yes.
And actually, they're looking to expand it to other communities from what I saw, so a nice thank you note from them. We did donate the facilities for that project. The Employee Recognition Scholarship, one of the recipients was Hunter Singer. He sent a thank you note to you for offering that scholarship. And then there's some information in your packet on the WAPAC FFA's second place in state finish. A little disappointed this year, but second.
Who we donate.
Second in state is very good, so congratulations, Ms. Irvin and your students.
Are there any school board visits?
Yeah, I went over to, and I had a nice conversation with Mr. Ayl. I went over during the summer school session and happened to bump into Mr. Ayl. We looked at the new gym floor at the middle school. If you haven't seen, it really looks nice.
New or redone?
Redone.
Yep.
Well, the design is new.
The design is new. That's why it's new, I guess. Very interesting for those of us who were there for many years at the old one, it's pretty impressive, the new one. And I did talk to a number of the teachers that were there, but I also was pretty interested in finding out how the breakfast program was going, or the meal program. It seemed to be going very well, which was very interesting and good to hear. And then I also was there at another time. Granted, I was there for a Winchester setup, but I had a nice conversation with Shannon Rockney and went all through the auditorium, the handful auditorium, learning all about all of the updates on that, which I hadn't seen in a long time. It was very interesting, the auditory and all that kind of good stuff. So it was interesting. I hadn't been in the building to see some of that for a long time.
Good. Thank you. Committee action reports.
I'm going to ask Stephen Johnson to present for the Personnel Committee since Sandy Robinson is not here. There were two meetings held. Steve, would you just highlight them and call for the motions, please?
Yes, there were two meetings. First was on June 30th. All members of the committee and the board were in attendance. There was a summary of the description of the 2015-16 budget assumptions and wage salary recommendations. There was also a formulated recommendation to the board relative to the 2015-16 wages, salaries, and contracts. The committee requested additional costing forecast models, which would consider two different scenarios, a 2.5 percent teacher salary schedule with the elimination of step zero and a 2.75 salary schedule with the elimination of steps zero and one. There was a fair amount of discussion with regard to that, but that was the highlights of the board's request to the administration. Meeting was adjourned and the committee reconvened July 10. Again, all the members of the committee were present as well as all members of the board. At that point, Dr. Pechal presented the costing scenarios that had been requested at the June 30th meeting. Recommendations relative to the 2015-16 wages are highlighted as deleting step zero and one, adding the 2015-16 percentage increase from the change to the teacher salary schedules. There was a motion on that committee, from that committee, to increase the schedule by 2.75 percent using the actual teacher placements as opposed to just the forecasting. There was also a motion to increase salary aid and bookkeeper schedule by seven point, I'm sorry, 2.75 percent. That did not pass at that time. There was a motion to delete the first column of the secretary aid bookkeeper schedule after applying a 3 percent increase to all employees in the category. Also a motion to increase all employees in the custodian, maintenance, and mechanic category by 3 percent. Motion that bus drivers category be increased by 3 percent. Motion that first food service category be increased by 3 percent. And other contracted personnel, technology, therapists, et cetera, by 2.75 percent, giving the administration discretion to vary the amount and to be accountable for doing so under specific requirements or their needs to retain specific personnel. There was also a motion to increase supervisor contracts by 2.75 percent and add one month to the food service supervisor's contract. Another motion that administrator contracts be increased by 2.75 percent. And a motion to increase the career and technical education compensation from $3,000 to $4,000, which a motion to convert 15 percent of the health insurance premium benefit for administrators to salary and then require administrators to pay 21 percent of the health insurance premium with the ability to reduce the 21 to 15 percent by participating in the district's personal health assessment. There was a motion to amend the 2015-16 teacher handbook with recommendations that were provided therefore, largely editorial in nature. There was a motion to amend the bus driver handbook with some minor revisions. And there were some other discussions regarding route assignments, extracurricular trips, et cetera, but those are the bulk of the motions. Those are the motions that were passed by the Personnel Committee to the board for their consideration.
Okay, any questions? This does not need a second, but we do need a motion to approve.
The Personnel Committee would make that motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Betty? Sandy?
Okay, thank you. Future dates, Tuesday, August 11th will be our next regular board meeting, and that will be at 5:45 PM in the afternoon. And then the last item under my part is the contract with WideWig and Fremont School District. It's a 660301 contract providing the conditions here, they hire a speech pathologist and then they contract part-time, that personnel to the school district of Wapaka, part-time, and so that agreement needs board.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Future dates?
Yep, got that. And the next one, that's then Board Monitoring.
Okay.
Rhonda, are you gonna do that one?
Sure.
Okay. What would you like me to bring up, those charts?
Sure. If anybody wants to add something. There's not a lot to say about it because we only have two years of data when using this rubric. This is a Common Core rubric, so it's a four point with three being proficient. So what you have is a comparison from last year and this year, and I just gave you the spring scores. Wendy Vanenbush is really the one who does a lot of the work behind this. I gave you the spring scores, although it is tested in fall and in spring for grades K through six. The hard part about the writing assessment is the labor-intensive scoring days, because they each have to be read and really thought about, and we go through standardized way of scoring to make sure that we are all on the same page on what is the one, two, three, and four. The results are consistent with what we're seeing so far, preliminary results with the Aspire and the Badger, in that we have a lot more twos than threes. We'd like to have more threes, but using this Common Core rubric, this is pretty common statewide that we're gonna have a lot of twos. So we don't wanna forget the importance of writing in the curriculum. It's why we keep the writing assessment. Would be nice to actually do it three times a year, because then teachers could also use it for their personal SLOs, but then we have the long days of scoring. We get subs for a half day and all the teachers. We also invite teachers from different disciplines beyond English, so that the teachers in the content areas see the importance of writing also in the science and social studies. We vary the genres of how they write each grade level. So one grade will do narrative, the next will do opinion, the next will do informative, so that we're covering all the three kinds of writing required in standards.
Mind anything in particular that's lacking or missing, or?
One thing I noticed in the ninth grade Aspire, which would, that's not this test, but it was kind of common with this one, is the, the boys did worse than the girls. It looked like we did really poorly, but then when you looked at, we broke it down, it was, it was male. So sometimes you find an anomaly like that, but it could just be that year or that certain group. But overall, it's too early to see any general trends, because I just have the two years. This chart's a little deceiving, because it'll look like, oh, one year you scored zero, but if you look on the left side, it's really 65 percent. The graph doesn't start at zero.
Could you talk a little bit about, well, two parts. How long the kids been doing this test? And then how you calibrate the raters so that everyone is looking at it the same way?
Okay, they, it depends on the genre. It's usually just a class period that'll take to write an opinion piece or a narrative piece. If it's an informative piece, which we started this year at fourth grade, then they have, similar to how the Badger does it, they have the day before, the teacher will read them an article, or they'll watch a video about some nonfiction thing, and then the next day they'll have their writing. So it's really just a class period of writing for the kids, and then they turn it in, and then all the papers are mixed up, their names are taken off, they're numbered, and then we bring all the teachers, like I said, even the content area teachers. We have examples of what's a one, two, three, and four according to the rubric. We go through the rubric, talk about it, and then we read 10 papers randomly chosen, score them, and talk about them, compare them to the rubric, and see, is this really a one, is this really two, is this really three, four? So everyone has an idea of what it is. And then you get in groups. If you felt like you scored kind of low, you get with someone who scores high, you get in groups of two or three. You read, one reader reads it, and then passes it to the next reader, and they have to come to consensus on what the score is. And then the anchors that we chose earlier are thrown back in there randomly to make sure we're still scoring the same way. So it's, it's a long process.
Wow, that's a lot of work.
And then at the end, they're all, have to be put back to the names of the students, and then Wendy does the calibrations on the percentages of proficient advance and the growth of the kids. This assessment's also used for the Sage results. It's used for a lot of things. I'd like for the teachers to see the importance of it more. Right now, it's kind of used at the administrative level to watch our curriculum and watch how we're doing, but like I said, I'd like for the teachers to be able to see, we're spending all this time, how can I use this to improve my instruction? So it's a little working on that.
The good news is that, like you said, the results are very similar to the standardized writing test that we take, so our measuring or assessment must be pretty fairly accurate.
Rhonda, I, this is a district writing assessment. Do we compare this to any other districts in any way, shape, or form?
Not on this. Just, I just compared, like you said, to the Badger and Aspire, just to see if we're kind of on the same.
Right, and we compare it to ourselves over the years, obviously, but.
Yes, yes.
How much time does the staff spend on this, and how much time do the kids spend?
Wendy spends a lot of time preparing and then formulating it. The kids only spend one class period in the spring and the fall, and for the high school kids, it's just once in the winter. And the teachers spend one half-day in the spring and the fall scoring. A lot of districts have gotten rid of a district writing assessment, because there's just so many tests they have to do. So, you know, I've been at networks and said, you know, should I just get rid of this? And they usually say, we wish we didn't get rid of ours, because it really does give you more information than all those other ones do, so kind of kept hanging on.
How many assessments of the kids are there every year? It seems like we're always talking about these things. There must be one every two weeks.
And they change every three weeks.
Yeah.
The ones the state requires are just once in the spring, except for ninth grade this year had to do it in fall and spring. You guys catch me if I'm wrong. And then the ones that we require for our district assessments, the map testing is fall, winter, and spring. And we have to do those three times a year for SLOs, for educator effectiveness. So those are the computerized map testing. Then we have RTI testing, which is usually done through Ames Web, and that's another computer test. Really short, though, it's just quick checks, and that depends on how the student is performing. If they are in an intervention group, they're gonna have to have that at least once every two weeks. Otherwise, if they're just being screened, it's, it's three times a year. And then the writing assessment, once or twice a year.
Juniors have ACT.
Juniors have ACT, but that's no state for all juniors. And then if you hear about other testing, those are formative assessments that teachers are giving. And we, as administrative team, are working on making those really valuable and genuine formative assessments. Are they really checking understanding? And there's different ways you can do that without a paper and pencil test.
When you talk about a fall test and a spring test, it's all different subject areas as well. It's not pretty bad.
We did hear, I think just last week, that we know more WKCE in November for four, eight, and 10, and that had just been kind of just hanging on to test science and social studies. They're going to not have that. They did say they will have science on the new state test in the spring. They didn't, they didn't really say what they'll have for social studies, but there's one last.
Do the kids get the results of this back?
The kids know their map score immediately. Comes right up on the screen, and a lot of them, even the younger ones, are trying to beat their score. So that's, that's nice. Badger and Aspire, they promised they would come right away, but they're just now coming. I just yesterday got a, got an email that the Badger results are out.
And then are they sent to the kids?
Yes.
Steve, maybe I could comment one thing on this district-wide writing, because I was involved in it for years. The nice thing, and I'm not a big proponent of more testing, but the good thing about this is you can tailor make it, because it comes from the district. So the writing prompts are made up by the staff, and the people who actually graded are staff members. And then what we used to do in the older ones, the 11th grade, is to give them back to the students. Some use them as a grade. I know Nancy Cummings always did that, as an assignment. And would go into the assignment book, if you will, like any other writing assignment might. But the good thing was, they're graded by a team, as Rhonda says, people, and it's not just this teacher grading this student, but it was a team of people, so they kind of get an objective idea of how their writing is once a year. And that's a little different than the way it would be normally. So from that perspective, I think it's good. It's sort of like a self-evaluation, how are our kids doing? And we look at it, the teachers in the district, and kind of get an idea, and get them right back. It doesn't have to go anywhere outside of the district. That helps.
All I ask is, you know, how many of these do the kids do? I mean, how many, I mean, is it 10 days a school year, or is it 15, 20? I mean, you can test, you can take these kids and teach, and you're.
They do test a lot, and I'm sure there are kids that say, well, I'm not even gonna try, there's too many tests. But a lot of kids like it, too. And even the little ones, they do PALS at K through two, and they don't even know that it's a test, because most of it, the teacher takes them aside and asks them, what's this letter? And they're just getting extra attention. So in some ways, it's not as bad as you hear. In some ways, some kids, yeah, it's, they just don't care anymore.
Most, always heard the other side of it as well, though, that some teachers are dealing near teaching.
Yes.
The test not to some of the subject matter that they might prefer in some respects. That's still.
I think that happens most with the state mandated test. Ones that we make as a district, we tried, like Pat said, we fit our needs. Like an example of a writing prompt would be, I think 11th grade had, do you think that potential employers should use social media, Facebook, should check on prospective employees on their Facebook? And that was a great prompt, but we had kids speaking from both sides. So the more authentic you make the assessment, I think, the more valuable it is.
I think the other thing is the statewide testing and the problem that is, it isn't so much that how many days you get it, but as Rhonda just said, you don't get the results back on those sometimes until the next year. But by that time, it's so far beyond where you might have been, and that's really more of a problem than the actual test, I thought. It's like you give these tests, and then we never see the results.
So why are we giving them?
Well, that's a question we can't answer.
Well, the state tests are to measure school, school performance, so they're not really for the kids.
Okay, that's one day, one day a year, or two days a year?
Well, no, because it depends how many subject levels they test. There'll be one day for reading, one day for math. So four, it could be four days. How long is it taking in your schools?
Well, the problem is special education students.
Yeah.
That they receive accommodations, and for some of our special education students, thinking about the ACT test in particular, there are students that spent well over seven, eight days taking the two parts of the ACT test that would be required. And so, you know, I'll bite, I, I can tell you that there are parts of the state testing that are really difficult for us to accomplish. It takes those kids out of their normal schedules. The students that need to be in class more than any of the other students are the ones that are pulled out more than any of the other students in order to make sure that that test is taken to its nth level. And the Aspire is very much like that. The Aspire is also an accommodated test, where our special education students can receive more time, they can have it read to them, they can have many accommodations that stretch out the time that it takes to administer the test and the time that that student is out of the classroom. So we're talking about both teachers out of the classroom and students out of the classroom, and that's difficult for us. In defense of the writing prompt, this is an easy one. This writing assessment is kind of a ping-pong done. It is a piece of the bigger puzzle, but the, the big problem is just the state accommodations. They're so difficult for us to validate, but it's what we have to do.
You mean you have to?
It's state required. We have to, we have to administer these tests. 100 percent of our students need to take them. We can't.
Are there any that we are not ordered to take?
No, we're doing just the bare minimum, really. I mean, we're doing the test that the state requires us to do, and it's giving us a lot of information. I mean, I'm, I'm not saying that we should be doing more by any means, but it does take quite a bit of time. And in my head, when I think about the amount of time that a freshman or sophomore is spending testing with the state test alone, I think it averages four or five days a year, and longer or shorter, depending on what their educational needs are.
You say four or five days, you mean entire days?
Well.
Bulk of a day?
Bulk of a day, where the rest of their class schedule then is compacted, and maybe they're running through and handing in assignments or whatever, but it impacts your day pretty significantly.
And that's in addition to all the other testing that's done, and all the other subjects, you know, however often that's done. And I guess, I agree with Pat. In some of this, I've always said, I think the worst part of this is for the kids to be tested and not get their results back and not learn from that. Then, I mean, that's really honing in on we're teaching to the test, because we don't really care that the kids care what they know or don't know, we just care what we need to do to pass, you know, whatever, you know? And I would hate to take tests that I don't get my results from.
Let me put a different spin on that a little bit. The state is saying, yeah, we don't care either what the individual students do. This is a way to measure your teaching. Are you teaching what you need to teach? And whether we get those results right away or get those results three months later, as teachers, as a district, we can look at that stuff and say, okay, our kids aren't doing well in this, we have to do a better job of teaching this. So the one, you're, you're right about kids getting their test results. It's meaningless to them when it comes three months later. But it's all valuable to the district in saying, well, we got a real gap here. Our ninth graders are not getting something in eighth grade that they need to get, and we need to fill that gap. So there is value in that part of it. And that's what the state says. The state doesn't care about what each individual, doesn't necessarily care about what each individual did, but if our school district score is low, our district is ranked lower than the next district. So that's the state's mentality for, for testing, is how well our public school is doing compared to, I won't go there.
Is there really an impact to the student not getting their grades back right away? I mean, they've been brought up in this environment that this is just something they do and they don't get the results. They never have gotten the results quite immediately.
Right.
Therefore, do they really look at it the same way as you do? For example, if you're taking an online course and you want to know if you passed or failed, or what kind of a score you got, quite quickly? I'm just not sure that the students look at these the same way as they do an exam in any of the classes that's going to go towards their semester grade or their, you know, whatever the case may be.
Well, yeah, and because of that, I could see kids getting lackadaisical, because why should they care? I'm just one of the masses. It doesn't really apply to me. I'm not gonna learn anything from it, so I'll just put some answers down, you know? I don't know, and it probably, I'm sure that that's not the majority, but it just, you know, it is overwhelming, all these different.
And we're talking about two parts. The state required tests are the ones that take a long time to, to get back. The map testing that we do three times a year is immediate, and that's another reason we do that map, is so we have that immediate feedback for the educator effectiveness part, as well as for the student to know. So you could say, well, you don't have to do the map tests, but then all we're giving are these tests that we don't get results for a long time. The map test really inform our instruction immediately.
And map tests have taken on greater importance for teachers, because they're using that, the majority of them, to measure their SLOs, and it's very important how well the kids do. And the kids can see on the results of math. It's broken down, for example, in math, it's broken down to numerology, geometry, different strands, so they can kind of see where their lowest or highest at each year, and that test follows them every year, so they can watch their growth.
We're using the map test also to help us determine when to give support, academic support to students in the area of math, science, and English, and we take, take a look at the. And we take, take a look at the MAP results and then use that to help determine those students that are going to go into a tutoring hour.
Just a brief comment to teaching to the test. The direction we're going is, the reason we have state tests is because the expectation is that school district A is teaching the same things that school district B is, as school district C. So when we say teaching to the test, in effect, we are, we, we are teaching the kids so they can be successful on that test. And that narrows our curriculum to what is being tested. So I would hope we're teaching to the test because we're teaching what, what kids are being tested on in order to know universally throughout Wisconsin or the United States if we start talking about Common Core and...
But the tests are written better now. They're not just so factual. Like example of a third grade question is, read these articles about different kinds of sharks. And then the next day, if you're a marine biologist, which shark would you be most afraid of meeting and why? And just really, the questions are written better. They, they cause higher level thinking. So that's one good thing.
It's definitely a balance, number of hours spent testing versus the value of the tests. We talk about that constantly as to whether we should do this test or not. We're actually looking at MAP. There are other alternatives out there for MAP that might take a little less time and give the same information. We can do one more year of MAP before we flip, flip that if we do. But it's, it's not something that we're ignoring. We hear the students and the teachers about testing.
To that venture question, it takes anywhere from four to eight days.
Something like that, yeah. I just think it's something we need to watch because we're as concerned as you are, Steve.
Yeah, we really are.
I mean, when we were there.
Rhonda, thank you for that.
Thanks.
Good presentation. Consent and, oh geez, we can't do it yet. It says 7:50. Is there a motion?
Looking for the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call. Patrick Fair?
Aye.
Steven Johnson?
Aye.
Kirsty Greenfield?
Yes.
Connie Baldwin?
Yes.
And Stephen Campbell?
Yes.
Would someone then read the adjourned to close session under statute, please? As a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn to adjourn to close session under state statute 19.85 per n1, per nB, and per nC, considering discipline and employment of public employees. Do you want me to read that?
No, that's good.
Okay.
Second.
Negative roll call. Patrick Fair?
Aye.
Steve Johnson?
Aye.
Kirsty Greenfield?
Yes.
Connie Baldwin?
Yes.
Stephen Campbell?
Yes.
And then could I ask, please, me, Carl, and Glenn, just to stick around for a few minutes, please? For the record, there's no action taken in closed session. We're going to adjourn from closed session. We will not be right back in a minute or so. So, public portion of the meeting is over.